Gentlemen and welcome to the August 10th Board of Selectmen meeting. I will call the board to order and I would ask Mr. Muniz to do a roll call.
Want to appoint me clerk?
We will in a second. In a second.
Okay, roll call here. Selectmen Slavin, Titlebaum, Whiteside, and Muniz are present. Selectman Tropiano is not present. And also our attorney, Mr. Bowen is present.
Fine. I will accept a motion to appoint Mr. Muniz as chairman pro tem.
So moved.
Motion made. Yeah. What did I say?
Chairman.
Yeah, okay. Clerk, pro tem. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Muniz. Mr. Muniz got a 10 o'clock this morning phone call and so he's all set. Let's see. Do it. Thank you. Announcements, Mr. Slavin. I'm going to ask all of you in the back, we can hear you if you're talking, so please don't. Thank you.
The only thing that I have really is the VFW will have their Wednesday night dinner this week. I believe it's Chicken Mozambique. Again, it's about $10. It's one of the best buys in town. Appreciate people participating, generating funds for them. The other piece also is the Cape Verdean Festival, which was canceled this year. There is a small version at the VFW. I believe it's going to be Saturday or Sunday.
I don't remember.
Well, either way, what's happened is it's already gone out all over the country and we're probably expecting, I would say, a half to three quarters of what we usually get. It's going to be at the VFW again on Ballpark Road. If it's anything like the loose festival this past weekend, cars were parked all the way down onto that, all the way to the bank. So if you're going to go make arrangements because they're selling tickets to go and also expect to have some real traffic issues, I expect it to be a very large fun time though. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Muniz, do you have any announcements, sir?
Yeah, I'd like to announce the board and committee openings. And the simplest way to really to apply is to go to the Wareham Town webpage, go to search and type in committee openings.
Like you did.
Yes, you saw that I did a test on it. And there's one we could discuss about that later. So right now, there's committee openings on the bypass committee, the Board of Health, Cemetery Commissioners, Conservation Commission, Council on Aging, Historic District Commission, Historical Commission, Library Board of Trustees, Marine Resources Commission, Minor Forest Committee, Planning Board, Recycling Committee, Road Commissioners, Solar Bylaw Committee, Citizen at Large, Wareham Cultural Council, Wareham Redevelopment Authority, Wareham Veterans Council, and the Zoding Board of Appeals. So take a look. If you're interested, you could either, you can fill out online. You just click at the bottom where it says, "Application." It says the applications are available on Town Line, but it's also a live link to the application process online. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr.?
Nothing.
No? Okay. I just have a couple. I did go to the Eagle swearing-in ceremony on July 31st. We had two young men who became Eagle Scouts in Wareham, Ezra Barbosa and Dougie Santos Jr. The neat thing about my going to this was I got to see people who were my age, who were the grandparents of these kids who were growing up. So it was fun and it's a wonderful ceremony. We have another one coming up in the end of September and another one coming up in December. This year, the, this Narragansett Portion Troop 19 actually will have graduated five young men to be Eagle Scouts. And on the agenda, I'll just let you know that we are going to be skipping 9B as well as 9J. And that's it. Citizens' comments. Seeing none. Board comments. Mr. Slavin.
Those of you who have been traveling on 628 in East Wareham, the construction is going pretty heavy now, especially down by Main Ave and the onset fire station, the new one. The reason there is that's going to be one of the turnarounds because this will become a divided highway where you can't just cross whenever you want, taking left-hand turns. So it's a little confusing for people right now, coming up from a cohesive Narrows Bridge, coming up to Main Ave. People are not looking at what's actually been put there. You have to basically, when you get there, actually head over toward the onset fire department. There's a road that kind of goes around and curves, brings you back, so you come back to the light to go across. Right now, we're seeing people getting to that spot on 628 and just waiting on the light to take a left-hand turn on the main part of the highway. It's not legal. It's going to end up in accidents. You're going to have to deal with it for a little while. It's just part of the whole process of changing that complete road around. There'll be two other turnarounds being built like that also on the highway. Once this is done, it should, as far as safety goes, completely lock up the whole highway so the accidents that we have on a normal basis on illegal left-hand turns in both directions will be over and done with. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Muniz, do you have any comments?
I just, we had just briefly spoken about some of the citizens who still are not allowed to speak. And Chairman Whiteside and I are still discussing this and it's her choice. And I'm trying to get her to relax it a little bit, but it's up to her. And that's all I really have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Titlebaum.
I don't have any thank you.
Thank you. I have nothing either. We have three, four appointments, interviews. The first one is the Council on Aging one with Jody Sandigate. Ms. Sandigate has been invited to speak to us tonight only on the matter of her appointment to the Council on Aging. And would any of the Council on Aging members like to come up with her? Because we got a wonderful letter from you ladies saying we'd love to have her. Thank you. And if you both will identify yourselves when you sit down afterwards and then pull the mics really up close to you because with the masks, it's very hard to hear you. Jody Sandigate. Thank you. And?
My name is Janet Wilson.
And you are a member of the Council on Aging?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Would, would you like to address the board about your desire to be on the Council on Aging?
No, I think that I'm looking forward to becoming a member because my area and expertise in social work, I think I have a lot to offer the community in helping them in the Council on Aging and seeing what we can do to make Wareham a better place for our elderly. Because the elderly population, in my opinion, are gems. They're true gems, you know. And I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what I can do to
Thank you very much.
Get a better place.
Ms. Wilson, would you care to address us on your desire, your board's desire to have Ms. Sandigate on your board?
Well, we are very excited to have younger people join us. And we are working to make the community more age-friendly. So any help and ideas we get, we're looking forward to it.
Great. Does any one of the members of this board have any questions?
No.
No?
I don't have a question. I'll just make a statement. I've reviewed the application and the applicant's curriculum vitae and it seems well suited for this board.
I agree 100%. All accept a motion.
I move to, I move to appoint Jody Sandigate to the Council on Aging for term to expire no later than June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous.
Thank you.
Your paperwork will not be ready until Thursday.
That's fine.
But it will be available in the Board of Selectmen's office Thursday morning. And then you will pick it up there and then you'll take it down to the clerk's office to be sworn in.
Okay.
And then you're official.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations and thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
The next one?
This is for an appointment to the Community Events Committee and it's Selectman Alan Slavin. So I move to appoint Selectman Alan Slavin to the Community Events Committee.
Second.
Term to expire June 30th, 2024.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Motion made and seconded. All, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and one abstaining. Thank you. 301. Thank you. Same comment about the paperwork. And Wendy St. Julian. Is Wendy St. Julian here? No? Okay.
How would you like to proceed on that?
I have known Wendy for, I won't say 100 years, but many, many years. I taught at the high school with her husband. She is an excellent, excellent candidate for this and I would recommend that we appoint her.
So I would move to appoint Wendy St. Julian to the Wareham Cultural Council for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Probably the reason she's not here is she works as a nighttime, night shift nurse, so. And the Board of Health, we have an application, sir? Or an appointment?
We have an appointment for that and I don't see Mr. Perry here.
No, he is not.
And Mr. Perry has served on the board for a number of years as an associate member of the Board of Health and has been recommended by the Board of Health to be moved into the full Board of Health position and no longer an associate. So I'd make a motion to appoint Lawrence Perry to the Board of Health for a term to expire no later than June 30th, 2024.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge Glenn Wontaro's lengthy term of service on that board. Prior to that, he was also the town health agent. I had some dealings with him in my capacity as an attorney and landlord-tenant law. He was always professional, did a good job, and he served the Board of Health well and I think we should acknowledge that.
Yes, thank you.
I already made a motion.
Yeah, motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, and again, the paperwork will be ready. We have a 7:15 hearing and if you walk really slowly to the table, it'll be 7:15 by the time that you get there. The application is from the Lucky Goat Brewing LLC. So if you'd like to step forward. Thank you so much. Good evening.
How are we?
We have a motion to open the hearing.
So made.
Motion made by Mr. Slavin, seconded by Mr. Titlebaum. May I have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Muniz?
Yes.
And myself, yes. The hearing is now open. We have before us an application from Lucky Goat Brewing LLC, 379 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. Manager Kendall Peabody. Mr. Peabody has had several conversations with our office, with Mr. Muniz, with myself, and I think we finally have what makes sense for your business to be open. And so we welcome you to Wareham and what would you like to tell us?
Good evening. I, testing?
Yeah.
You're good.
You're good.
Well, I just want to say we're really looking forward to being part of the community. Our first and foremost, we always wanted to be, don't think about Joe's to being, starting a brewery, was a, starting something for the community that's community-based and community-first. And we always want to try to put that first. We look forward to doing whatever we can to be a community brewery. I, there isn't too much more hard to say. I think I outlined it pretty well in the application. My apologies over the confusion of the hours. I do think those hours fit our time a lot better, though. So I'm glad we're able to kind of figure that out together.
So, Mr. Peabody, first of all, could you identify yourself for the record? I forgot to.
Oh, yes, of course, yeah. Kendall Peabody, co-owner of Lucky Goat Brewing.
And the rest of?
Caitlin Hurd, co-owner as well.
Yep.
And Barry, co-owner.
Okay. And Mr. Peabody, could you tell us what the hours you are now looking for? We have the correct application, but I just want to make sure that the public is aware when they can go and
Of course.
Enjoy your wares.
Yeah, so it's one day Thursday from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Friday from 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Saturday from 12:00 PM to, Saturday from 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And Sunday from 12:00 PM, noon, to 6:00 PM.
Okay.
Well done. Thank you. Those hours of rehearsing for the mayor paid off.
I lost my notes.
Does any? Yeah, they, the application that we have in the packet was updated afterwards. Mr. Muniz has the correct application.
Okay. I was just checking because I know there's a discrepancy because I forgot the agenda on my phone, so I was checking.
The agenda, at the time the agenda was written, it was different hours, but Mr. Peabody just read into the record what he is looking for.
No worries. Just wanted to make sure we were signing the right thing.
Do you have any questions, Mr. Slavin? Mr. Titlebaum, do you have any questions?
Nope, I'm good.
Any questions, Mr. Muniz?
You'll be serving like little snacks and stuff?
Yes, yes. In addition to serving snacks, which I clear with the health board, I also, we talked to several different food trucks. In addition, I have talked to several of the surrounding restaurants about doing a delivery if that was possible, if that was doable. And they all agreed, or at least the ones I talked to said they are pretty good on delivery of food products, if people wanted to order food. So people will not be wanting a food, which I also feeds back into our community-based organization.
But for the record, you must provide.
Yeah, we have, we have snacks available.
We'll, we'll have the snacks and so forth, but we will give them the idea that they can go down to Mama Mary's or Minerva's or.
Make available.
Have menus or whatever and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Excellent. Are there any other questions? I'll accept a motion to close the.
About, anybody want to speak to?
Oh, yeah. Is anybody in the public care to speak on behalf of the applicant? Anybody want to beat them into submission?
We got two people.
Excuse me.
That's Annie Hayes and I don't know who this young lady is, but.
I would like to speak very much in favor of Lucky Goat Brewing.
Thank you.
You better identify yourself at the microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I don't know that you need the microphone, but.
Honor Peabody.
Thanks.
Thank you. The record will show that Ms. Peabody is in support. Ms. Hayes, I will allow you to speak only to supporting the application and you may. Or not, I mean, if you want to speak against it. Yeah.
Take to the topic.
But you must, you must stay on topics, ma'am. Can you? No, just make sure that you really have that close.
Oh, sure, okay. Yeah, my name is Annie Hayes and I just chanced in after the rally a couple of last weekend, two weekends ago.
Yeah, two weekends.
The door was open and it was absolutely delightful. It was like a neighborhood pub in England that I've been in at. And within minutes, everyone there was talking as a whole and really laughing, having a good time. And I'm not one who usually does that, but it was so easy there. I really enjoyed it.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who chooses to speak either on behalf or opposing this application? I will accept a motion to close the, do you choose to speak? No, okay.
I'm just fixing up.
I will accept a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Motion made and seconded to close the hearing. Mr. Slavin?
Yes.
Mr. Titlebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Muniz?
Yes.
Myself, yes. The hearing is now closed. I will now accept a motion.
I may, I accept a motion to approve the application for farmer's pouring, series pouring permit for Lucky Goat Brewing LLC at 379 Main Street, Wareham, Mass. Manager Kendall Peabody. Do you want their hours of operations right out?
It doesn't need to be, but.
No, but I, so they'll be open Wednesday through Thursday, 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Friday, 3:00 PM to 10:00 PM. Saturday, 11:00 AM to 10:00 PM. And Sunday, 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Are those your same hours as your retail or no?
A, yes.
This is for pouring, all right, so this is for pouring and retail.
Yes.
So I just wanted to.
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded to approve. The license is read. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous. Mr. Peabody, I apologize, but I can guarantee you that the paperwork will not be ready until Thursday morning. And I appreciate the fact that you were able to correct the information on your insurance binder. And I appreciate the fact that you have worked very, very hard to get this business on the rails. And good luck to all of you and.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for choosing to do business in Wareham.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you for patience as well.
You appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, good. Okay, thanks, bud. We now have an application from Nuria. Actually, two applications. Is someone here to speak on behalf of Nuria? Could, would you step forward and identify yourself, please, for the record?
My name is Sam Wehbe. I'm the district manager for Nuria.
Sam?
I'm the district manager for Nuria, Sam Wehbe, W E H B E.
Thank you. Can you tell us what it is that you're looking for, please?
Honestly, they told me to just, to be here.
Okay. What you are looking for, then, is you are looking for
Common Victrola's license.
A common Vic license for Nuria Energy Retail Inc., DBA Amados. And then you're also looking for a blah, blah, blah. Common Vic for. Yeah, DBA Nuria. They're two businesses apparently in the same location.
Yes, we have an Amados, which is the food service side, and then the store side.
Which you sell food, but not.
Yes.
Okay. So I make a motion to approve.
Does anybody have any questions?
No. Well, that comes after.
They already pre-exist over in the mobile station with the same type of operation down across from the barber shop, Mr. Chris.
So I make a motion to approve a common Victrola's license for Nuria Energy Retail, DBA Amados, 2416 Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Mass.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous, and application.
I make a motion to approve a common Victrola's license for Nuria Energy Retail Inc., DBA is Nuria.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a common Vic, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
For Nura, Nuria Energy Retail Inc., DBA Nuria. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. The paperwork, I don't know whether somebody's going to pick it up from your office or from the station or whether.
Would it be ready on Thursday?
Thursday morning, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah. Probably would be there tomorrow, but just to be safe, we, we have people out on vacation and we have people out.
No problem.
That's in our office across the parking lot. It's not in this building.
Okay.
So you're going to go up to the, you're going to go up the stairs to the top floor. And as soon as you get up to the top of the stairs from the side entrance here, our office is right on the right, I mean, left.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, that left.
Yeah.
Are you open already?
Yes, we are. We've been open for two weeks now.
Okay.
And we welcome you all to visit and check out the new store.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. What's going next door?
Do you want the other one?
I heard it was the Buffalo Wild Wings.
Okay, no.
Next door, yes.
I just wanted to make sure it was Amados.
Buffalo Wild Wings.
Thank you, guys.
Finally.
No local license.
Thank you.
Clamoring for that.
And again, thank you for choosing to do business in Wareham. Ms. Redden? Could you, come on down.
CDBGs. Bar in New York.
We are now going to be hearing from Ms. Redden Buckminster.
Jamie Redham Buckminster.
On the 2021 Massachusetts CDBG grant. And if you would explain to the audience quickly what it is and then go from there.
I can. So I'm Jamie. I'm from Community Opportunities Group. They, the firm itself has managed these community development block grants for the town for at least the past five years and sometime before that. The community development block grant is a very cool grant, if I have to say so myself. It does great things for low and moderate income communities. Wareham is one of 11 that is actually designated by the Department of Housing and Community Development, or DHCD, at the state level as a mini entitlement plan community. So what that means is while most smaller cities and towns need to apply for these funds on a competitive basis every year, Wareham right now is able to just apply for the grant and get it automatically due to its demonstration of high need. So it's not necessarily a good thing to have high need, but these funds are here so that we can address some of those needs. And they're, they're, they're great. So we're eligible this year to apply for $825,000, which is the same as prior years. And we're, we're very lucky for that. And you can do certain things with CDBG funds, not everything, and I'll get into a little bit of that later.
You will be having a public hearing on the 24th.
Correct.
In front of this board in this room, so.
Yes, so I invite people to come in and speak to this, too. So basically, the program requires that at least two public hearings be held in conjunction with a grant. And that's every grant. So whether it's FY '20 or FY '21 or FY '18, because it's still in operation, we'll talk about it. One of these hearings must be held prior to submitting the grant application so that the public can comment on proposed activities and provide input and suggestions. That's not today. That's coming up later this month, so we hope you will come and, and provide input on what we're going to talk about here today. So that will be part of these, the regularly scheduled selectmen's meeting on August 24th. And it will also provide an update on all of our active, our other active CDBG grants, which I misspoke earlier, is actually, we just shut down FY '18, so it's FY '19, FY '20, which we just started up. And then we'll talk about the grant application for FY '21. Tonight, I just, before we get into the nitty-gritty, so I don't forget, I need the board to please approve the following motion, which is to designate Derek Sullivan, Town Administrator, as environmental certifying officer, which such, with such designation, I apologize, to remain in effect until rescinded.
So moved.
That's perfect.
Is it written down?
It is written down. I can give that to you.
Thank you. Motion made and with a second. All those in favors?
Can we have some discussion on that?
Sure.
So does that have to be done tonight?
It does. That allows me to start the environmental review process for the grant, which is, right now, the environmental review process is just something that needs to be done based on the activities that we have coming up. It doesn't become final until we actually start implementing the grant. But traditionally, it's the town administrator or someone similar who's the environmental certifying officer. And he gets to sign off on the paperwork.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as read into the record, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So now getting into proposed projects. Now, I just want to let everybody know that this was not an ideal, as you might imagine, application season. Normally, we would be having this discussion in January or February with a March application due date. Unfortunately, the FY '20 grant, which we had written a year ago, was, the implementation on the FY '20 grant was delayed due to the pandemic, which then in turn, as a domino effect, delayed the application process for this grant. So we found out in June that the applications were due, are due September 10th, the week of Labor Day. So it wasn't. of Labor Day. So it wasn't ideal timing. It's more of a quick turnaround than we're used to. But I would like to have more participation from the Board of Selectment, if anybody's willing, hopefully for the next grant, as discussions start taking place. We don't know if the grant's going to then get back on the March schedule, and we'll have to apply in March again, but I'm keeping my fingers crossed and sort of hoping for that, which will put us back into a normal schedule, and we'll be discussing these things over the winter. So just a feather in your cap.
Okay. Earlier this evening, Mr. Muniz was discussing some of the ways that the money would possibly be dispersed, so he might be one of your...
Absolutely. And if you want to stop in and chat at any time, I can let you know when I'm in this town hall, and we can, we can chat. I also live in town, so if you want to grab coffee sometime, we can do that, too.
You're the administrator of the grant, right?
I'm the program manager, right.
Right.
So I was going to go through just a little bit background on CDBG funding. If I'm getting too lengthy, just stop me. I just wanted to let folks know a little bit about how this works. So projects have to be eligible for CDB, excuse me, CDBG funding under Title I of the 1974 Housing and Community Development Act, as amended. So you have to meet that, and then you have to, programs or projects that you're doing need to meet what's called a national objective. And that's one of three. Benefit to low and moderate income persons, that's the big one. Prevention or elimination of slums and blight, and I will get back to that later. And the third one is urgent or critical community need, which sounds great because it feels like you can do anything, except you can't. It's reserved for incidents such as natural disasters and other things that, it's just typically not used. It's there in case you need it. So we can't typically use that one. So we discussed this with town staff and came to a bit of a consensus about what we should do for this grant. Obviously, nothing is set in stone. Opinions will be heard. We'll figure it out. But based on the selectmen's long support of funding, support of funding to organizations that provide direct services to Wareham residents, public social services, we included an allocation of funds for that in the grant, and we went for the max of a, and I'm saying we included. The grant's not written yet. It's not, I'm just thinking about it as, as in terms of, you know, what's the next step. So we are proposing to commit a maximum of $165,000 to public social services. That's the most that DHCD and HUD will let you commit. It represents 20% of the grant itself. We have an RFP out for public social services because we need people to propose programs. So this is important. It was, the RFP was issued in late July with a due date of 4:00 p.m. on August 16. It's available on the town's website. Hard copies are available in the community development office, which is now downstairs in the basement of Town Hall, across from the building department. So if you have, if you are an organization and you're wondering if this funding could work for you, just give us a call. We'll figure it out. So after the deadline, which is August 16, we'll review and score the applications for funding. We haven't set up who's going to score them yet, so if anybody would like to volunteer, you're more than welcome. And once we, we have those applications scored, we'll make recommendations for who will be funded at the August 24 public hearing. So the budget that I have laid out here, like I said, it may not be the final budget. We're still working the numbers. We're still figuring things out. But in a nutshell, again, it's an $825,000 grant. We're proposing to allocate $415,000 to public improvements in onset, $25,000 for an engineering study of 195 Main Street. Again, public social services, up to five can be included in the application for $165,000. And then program delivery and general administration, everything that makes the grant run, is $220,000. And I'm going to go into a little bit of background information. We completed what are known as slums and blight inventories a few years back for both Wareham Center and Onset Village. And it's a nasty name. Nobody wants to think that they're living in a slum or a blight, and you're not. But what those inventories do is it's a building-by-building inventory in each build, each village, that essentially says, all right, this is what needs improvement, and okay, this one is, you know, this building's fine. It's, the name is off-putting, like I said, but what those do is when DHCD accepts the slums and blights inventories, is that it allows us to more easily apply CDBG funds to those areas. If we didn't have a slums and blight designation, we wouldn't be able to just say, all right, let's spend money on, for example, sidewalks in onset, because we would have to prove a benefit to low and moderate income households. So it becomes very difficult to do when you get into infrastructure projects, but this is one of the ways you can do them with CDBG. The designations are, essentially become target areas for grant funds for the next 10 years, using the national objective, like I mentioned before, of elimination of slums and blight. So with that in mind, we've proposed two projects that aim to prevent and/or eliminate blight. Onset sidewalks, and this is really in recognition of the town's desire, and Mr. Sullivan's desire to continue investing in onset. We're proposing a sidewalk replacement project for Highland Avenue, right near Hammond School and the ball courts. And of course, there's that public parking lot it's abutting. If you've walked down them lately, the sidewalks are deteriorating. They're narrow, which is to be expected, but they're even impeded by utility pools in some areas. So, you know, you're walking in the road to get around the utility pool, and there's uneven, potentially hazardous walking surfaces. It's all stuff that you just don't want. You want to fix it. So the grant would fund the engineering design and construction costs for the project. Are there any questions now before I, okay. 195 Main Street, this was an interesting idea that Mr. Sullivan brought to me, and I said, let's see what we can do, just understanding that it's a difficult situation. 195 Main Street is the building that is falling sort of into Merchant's Way. On the backhand side, it's all taped off in yellow. That's because it, nobody should be in that building at all. They've gotten an order to vacate. It's, it's not a safe building. Yeah. So we, we're proposing to complete an engineering study, and I know studies are frustrating, but this is, this is one that could potentially get us some more funds in the future. So we want to complete an engineering study to determine the integrity of the building and the, some of the abutting buildings with common walls. I think there's at least one. And if the study determines that the building should be certainly demolished, the town can explore its options. Whether you want to use future CDBG funds to demolish it, whether, you know, you want to place a lien on the property, you know, whatever you want to do. But this will give you the ability to say, here's what's happening. How can we fix it? So that's kind of a fun thing that CDBG can do, because you have that study regardless of whether you decide to use CDBG funds on it.
Just as an observation with regard to that, very often when it comes to the necessity of public authorities getting involved with private properties to secure public safety or the building or what have you, the property owner sometimes is not thrilled about allowing people in. So that may require you to work with town council to get administrative search warrants and things of that nature, so you can get inside to do the study.
Mr. Bowen, do you choose to address that, please? Thank you.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Jamie, we've been looking at that building for quite a while.
You and me both, sir.
And, not sir, just rich. And it worries us. It's Carl's building. Carl should fix it. Carl, if you're listening, fix the building. Carl, if you're listening, let us go in and assess the building. My worries about the building or the cost of demolition, I don't know whether there's asbestos in there. Buildings of that era often have that kind of thing. I hope that the study, assuming Carl would allow it, should include that kind of thing. In order to, just so the public understands, and I think it's important for the public to understand the process, we would need to convene a board of survey to determine whether the building should be condemned. And the board of survey would have to vote to, you know, decide whether the building should come down. I have my own opinion on it, without a board of survey. But if the town were to demolish it, that would take place only if Carl wasn't willing to demolish it. You know, and I hope that's the kind of thing that Carl would want to step up and take care of himself. But if he didn't, and the board of survey said it would come down, we could demolish it. We would have to have a, put a lien on the property, because presumably, if Carl didn't want to pay to knock it down, he's not going to want to pay to have us knock it down. Carl, I hope I'm not offending you. But this is just the way it works. The building is dangerous, and something's got to be done with it. You know, if there's grant money to assess it, that's great, and I'd be happy to work with whoever you hire to contact Carl, talk to him, or whoever to get access into the property. But it's got to be done.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. You put that more eloquently and succinctly than I could have. I did, I did speak with Building Commissioner Dave Riquina about this, and, and he said, yeah, anything, you know, anything you can do to help. So we're working together.
Do you have questions, Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, just to go back into onset, we have an issue actually also that should be included. You go past Mark Anthony setting down toward the pier.
Yep.
As you walk up that little hill on the sidewalk there, we have issues with the guardrail. There's three sections that are completely gone. It's a huge safety hazard, and that needs to be fixed. So that has to be included in whatever we do along the area of onset.
That's included in our FY '20 grant, and we're working on the engineering for that right now.
It's something that's past due to be done. I know Mr., basically, you know, David from the highway stuff was trying to get it done, but he's behind schedule. But I'm really concerned. The yellow tape doesn't stop someone from falling off the edge into the street.
I completely agree. And quite honestly, I had hoped to start that project much earlier than now, but luckily we did get that grant started.
It is being addressed now. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Let's see. That's my spiel. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Sullivan?
No, I'd just like if we can get, you know, for ourselves, a copy of the, whatever detail we have that's being proposed, you know, for 19, 20, and 21, just so we see where we are, and see if we want to move things around.
So you want copies of the older, yeah.
I'd like to see what, how much money we have, you know, that hasn't been used yet, and where we're at.
Could you forward that to our office, please?
Absolutely. I can do that. And I'll also, I'll do that before the public hearing, so you have time to look it over. But I will also provide an update at the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just for the record again, what is the public hearing date?
August 24, right here, 7:30.
7:30, right here.
Yeah, we're at 7:30.
Mr. Muniz?
I want to state, as Mr. Sullivan just stated, do we have, do we have funds still left from years 18 and 19 for expended?
Yes. Short answer is yes. Did the...
But are they committed, is what you're looking for, right?
Yeah. Are there any funds available?
They have all been committed to a project?
No.
No.
We were very lucky in that the Wareham Housing Authority roof project came in under budget. We split that project between grant years, so we ended up using a lot less of our FY '19 funds than we expected. So we ended up putting $100,000 into the housing rehab program, because that was not an activity in that grant. Also, there's another, I don't want to say a number, but it's over $100,000 that we can do what the board wishes to do with, as long as it's an eligible CDBG activity. So I'd be happy to talk more about that.
That's good to hear, because I don't believe there was any housing rehabilitation housing program funds in the 20 budget. And I'm looking at the webpage right now, and there's no information on how to apply for housing rehabilitation program funds, and no explanation on how you can use it, and what the process is.
It actually is on the website.
No, I'm just, I'm looking at...
I know. Unfortunately, the town's website is very lacking, and it gets pushed down.
Right.
So unless we have IT take that information and put it on the top of the website very often, I mean, I, I would love a better way to get people information about this, because we do have a waiting list, but it's not, it's, we're always going to, people always need housing rehab, and we're always going to have a waiting list. So I, to keep, keep it going.
So there's, right now, there's zero money available for it?
No.
There is money.
Yes. There's money in the FY '19 grant, which is $100,000. And I believe, I'd need to double-check that we did, we did fund it in the FY '20 grant, because we hadn't funded it in FY '19. So I'd have to check on the numbers for you, but...
Because we're losing a lot of those off of the housing inventory, because they're expiring from previous years. And I think it's an important program to keep going, because it's low interest or no interest, if I'm correct, if you hold it for 15 years.
So I think we're talking about two separate things. So the housing, are you talking about your affordable housing stock?
But, but it goes on there. The two different things.
It does not.
Well, we have them listed there. Anyhow, that's something else. That's not, that doesn't have to do with what I'm talking about right here.
Correct. That doesn't have anything to do with CDBG funds, although it is, it is a community development.
That's correct. So I, I just think it's an important program, because if you hold the property for over 15 years, it's a grant, and you don't have to pay it back.
That is correct. Yep.
So I think that really needs to get out there, and people have to be notified somehow so that, and if we're doing slum and blight studies, those areas would be very appropriate for these types of funding. And you can use up that $100,000 or $200,000 pretty quickly, I'm sure.
Absolutely, especially where unfortunately, supplies and, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, that's okay.
Supplies and everything is, have become more expensive due to the pandemic. So we're finding that, you know, our program caps are being tested through DHCD as well. We've even asked DHCD about, you know, potentially increasing the program cap. But that said, you do have to be a lower moderate income family. That means you have to...
Guidelines.
Household. And that's anybody who lives with you. It's not just who's in your family, which is important. It's anybody who's in the house who has a job. And you have to meet state prescribed income limits. I don't make them up. They give them to me every year.
Correct.
But I'm happy, please call the office if you have any questions, if you're listening now. We're happy to help you. We want to get you the application. We want you to have the information. We want you on the waiting list, because we'll get to you at some point. And I know that sounds crazy, but we will. We'll get through it.
Did you ever interview for that ad where the guy talks so fast that you can't possibly understand?
I apologize. My mother told me that I needed to slow down.
No, it's fine. I think it's great. I just, that was very rude. I apologize.
No, it's not.
But I can get away with it with you.
I get excited.
Thank you so much. Any other questions? No? All right. Thank you so much.
I appreciate your time, and I'll see you on the 24th.
We'll see you on the 24th, and you will forward to our office the 19, 20, and the information that...
Absolutely. I will do that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Take care. We're going to, we're skipping over B, so we're going to go to C, which is the accepting of the chair, the donation, sir.
Okay. I move we accept a beach chair donated by Janet Fields, is it?
Yes.
And it's an adult beach chair for mobility. If anybody wants to see that here. Has large tires on it, so you can get some assistance, and you can push people out on the beach. And it's a very nice donation from Janet Fields of Newton, Mass. And on behalf of town of Wareham, I'd like to move to approve and accept the donation of one adult beach chair to be utilized through the Harbor Masters office.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Very generous donation. All those in favor accepting the donation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, is unanimous. Thank you.
Have to sign that?
Yep.
You do, as the chairperson.
Then we have a health inspector ratification, sir?
Yes, we do. We have a conditional offer of employment for Health Inspector of Elias Estvez Jr. And I move, I make a motion that we appoint Mr. Estvez to the position of Health Inspector.
Second.
Confirm, or ratify the hiring?
Yep.
Yep. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous. Thank you.
Okay.
That's all signed. Now we have the only set wig bomb signs.
Okay, so we had an application, we have an application... Okay, so, um, we had an application, we have an application, no, we had one, from the Ony Set Wigwam, um, fares for August 21st through 22nd, September 25th and October 9th. So they're looking to put up signs, um, on any property, or asking to put it on any property they can. They're asking for Main Street near the hospital, across from Mark Anthony's, um, besides. So, um, I'm, I'm not personally, I would make a motion to approve, but I think they need to fill out an application and check off where they specifically want it because, um, I, I don't think we can do it for them, but I'm just.
I, I believe you're correct. Um, we can't, some of these we can't give anyway, so the, the application is very specific about what properties we can, in fact, um, okay.
And I, yeah, I don't know if you, how you would like to move on this or if anybody is creative enough to.
Well.
To help us.
How about?
Why don't we just go over the list real quick? Alan's actually asking to be recognized.
Okay, yes.
What I would suggest is we contact the, uh, the people at the Wigwam. We just did this about four weeks ago and the woman came in with somebody else and they filled out the form and took care of it because for us to make a decision, it's really difficult. Plus they have some locations actually on state property.
No, there's some of them we can't grant.
But I'm just saying that way there, there's no confusion and no problems that way.
Uh, but because their first request is August 21, 22, which is before our next meeting, I think it would be appropriate, if you would choose to, would be to okay the appropriate placement of those, however many signs that we could using the proper application form.
Okay. We still need, we still need to notify them because there are signs up already.
I, I understand that, sir.
Yeah.
So, um, I would like to make, I'd like to make a motion to, um, approve with conditions, um, to allow the Ony Set Wigwam, I don't know if that's their official name.
It is.
It is?
Yeah.
Um, to, to put signs up in town, um, in places which we approve and which are already pre-approved on our application. Um, I, I'm just trying to help move this thing forward and.
I'll second because you, that's basically, you're basically saying that we will approve that which we could approve. We certainly can't approve it for state highways and, and private property or any other place, but we can certainly approve it for town property to the extent that they've listed town property.
Right. So would, excuse me, Mr. Muniz, would be the, the three different dates, there's, that's your motion, isn't it?
So, so August 21st through 22nd, September 25th and October 9th, and there's rules and regulations to when you can put them up and when you have to take them down. And that's up to them to follow those.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, I will have the office contact them. Thank you very much.
I would just like to, again, say that please use the forms that are online and, um, they're, they're pretty helpful and they, they tell you where you can basically put the signs and it's fill in the blanks. Um, thank you.
Thank you.
So that we're done with this, I believe.
Yep. So, um, the next is a review and possible vote on 3 Burn Circle West Wareham Refinance. It's a, um, building, it's a home that was built, uh, using, uh, D Department of Housing and Community Development as well as Habitat for Humanity. I've had Mr. Bowen look at the, um, paperwork in terms of form for its correctness. Um, what we need to do is to authorize either the town administrator or ourselves to sign this refinance because we are, we are blah, 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 blah. We are.
We approved the.
Yeah, we, we approved it, we're, there's a specific term I'm looking for.
Restriction.
Administrator of the.
Housing restriction.
Yep. So, um, all that is necessary would be, um, move to authorize the town administrator to sign the letter to the homeowner.
This is, um.
Yep.
This is, yeah, this is, um, I would like to make a motion that we approve, the, um, to approve G M Adams, um, 38 Burn Circle, West Wareham, Mass. to, uh, refinance the property, uh, just mentioned, um, to the amounts allowed by law and approved by us and it'd also be approved by Department of Housing and Community Development and also, I believe Habitat by Humana- by Humanity. Any of them that deny it would have to come back.
Second.
Is there a second? Okay. Motion made and seconded. Um, any further questions, Mr. Slavin? No? No questions, sir?
No, I, I went through everything.
Me too.
They have that right and that's their business to, to do it, just like we would on our own home, I believe.
Right. Motion made and seconded. All those in favor of authorizing the Board of Selectment to sign the letter to the homeowner, which will allow her to refinance the home. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous. Thank you.
Is that one?
Okay, um, gee, opt-out and reduction fees, curbside billing abatement recommendations.
Okay, so this is, um, we're calling them abatements, but, um, so I move that the, that we approve the, um, the recommendations of Director of Municipal Maintenance for, they call them abatements, but we really want to do that, but I'll stick with it. Uh, attach and approve the amount of $2,401.50. They're approved for opt-out and reduction fee applications.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Um, I'm, I'm just going to say I hope we're coming to the end of this.
Getting shorter.
Well, the list is getting shorter, um, and the amount is substantially reduced. Um, it continues to be a source of irritation for some people. I have to say thank you four million times over to Patty Neal, um, who has been handling the requests on a one-by-one basis in a professional and appropriate fashion. There's a motion made and seconded to approve the amount of $2,401.50, out, opt-out and reduction fee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Abstaining?
Nothing to sign.
3, 1, 0, yeah, I have to okay it for, um, Judy. Thanks.
I didn't see a spot for you.
We're skipping the next one?
Well, you want me to do the dates?
I know, yeah, I'm going to have Peter do the dates for the town meeting because he reads really fast.
That's correct. He's a speed reader.
Okay, Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen, 54 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571. Process calling town meeting, October 25th, 2021. General business, Tuesday, October 10th, 2021. That's today. Board of Selectmen establish all dates for completion of a warrant for the fall town meeting. Friday, September 10th, 2021. Last date to post upon town's principal bulletin board and the town website notice of intention of Board of Selectmen to call the fall town meeting for October 25th, 2021 and to open the warrant. That's under Wareham Home Rule Charter 2-4C, at least 10 days' notice before the warrant closes. Tuesday, September 21, 2021. Last day for articles and/or petitions to be inserted in the warrant, just 10 days or more after the warrant opens. Tuesday, September 21st, 2021. Board of Selectmen officially close the warrant. Monday, September 27th, 2021. Last day to post upon the town's principal bulletin board and the town website and deliver a copy of warrant to the town moderator and the chairman of the finance committee. This is under Wareham Home Rule Charter, Section 2-4D. Warrant to be delivered no later than the last Monday in September. Monday, October 25th, 2021. Commencement of town meeting, this is under Bylaws Division 1, Article 1, Section 1. Fall town meeting shall be held on the 4th Monday of October. So that's my motion.
To establish the dates as you have read them. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, unanimous. Thank you.
Okay, next I'll read out the warrant. Uh, we don't have to, uh, well, actually, we should just get it done. Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen, 54 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass., 02571. This is the notice of the 2021 Fall Town Meeting that gets posted. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, from the Shire Town to either the constables of the town of Wareham. Greetings in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and in accordance with the provisions of Division 1, Article and Section 3 of the Bylaws of the Town of Wareham amended, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the legal voters of the town of Wareham that the fall town meeting has been called by the Board of Selectmen to be held at 7:00 PM on Monday, October 25th, 2021, at which time the business of the town meeting shall be transacted. The last day for submission of articles to be inserted in the warrant is Tuesday, September 21st, 2021. The warrant for this meeting will close on Tuesday, September 21st, 2021. And you are hereby directed to post this notice upon the town's principal board on or before Monday, September 27th, 2021. Hereof fail not and make due return of this posting with the doings thereunto the town clerk given under our hands at Wareham this 10th day of August in the year 2021. Wareham Board of Selectmen, Judith Whiteside Chairman, Patrick Toriano Clerk, James M. Muniz, Alan H. Slavin, P W Title One.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. Thank you very much. I think you and Ms. Reben Buckminster are tied tonight for the fastest speakers.
Could have a contest.
Up my game.
Yeah, we could have a contest, absolutely. We are skipping over, um, Jay, I would like you to continue to look at the responsibilities page that was suggested to be added to the handbook. We have some new chairman, chairman and new clerks and there are a lot of questions about what their duties are or are not. Um, so that will be back on the agenda for the 24th.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd just like at this time to, uh, volunteer to put on a clinic for new chairpersons.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We could set it up at a time that would be convenient for them to a day-night double header, whatever it needs to be, but I think it would be helpful for them and give them more comfort in running meetings.
Chairman and clerks?
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Bowen. I know it's something that you and I and the, um, town moderator have discussed and I think it's, it's time. So I will talk with you on Tuesday, Thursday probably to schedule that. Um, the next are, are just some dates and some information that I will read. Um, we had a whole bunch of articles that needed to go forward, um, and I, I'll just read them into the record. These are from the annual spring town meeting or the special town meeting, which, and the, um, articles were submitted to the offices of Mark Pacico and Susan Williams Gifford. Article 6, the Home Rule petition for solar wind taxation is Bill Number Senate 2505. Article 14, liquor license for the 59 Main Street, Bill Number Senate 2504. Article 15, liquor license for 176 Main Street, Bill Number S2506. And Article 16, five pouring licenses for the Wareham Village 1 zoning district, Bill Number S2507. Article 23 and, um, Article 24, which are the Wareham Home Rule charters, those are with the, um, Senate Council along with the line edit version. They were given everything to, that was posted on the clerk's website, and I've been talking with Mary Wasliski, um, that's not right, but, um, to make sure that if there are any questions that we are available to answer them. Article 24, the ban of the sale of NIPs was submitted to the Attorney General's Office on June 28th. Article 26, the local initiative program, um, was submitted to the Attorney General's Office on June 28th, 2021. And any other business to come before us, Mr. Muniz? I do have the town administrator's report.
Not that I know.
Okay. I do have a, um.
Anybody else?
No. I mean.
Um, I do have a town administrator's report. He has finally received correspondence from the director Mendez of the Boys and Girls Club where he states, quote, "As far as the building issues, the concern for the Boys and Girls Club was not that the building was inhabitable for use, it just did not meet the standards and new standards required by the Boys and Girls Club of America for us to operate the facility. That, with the lack of financial ability and declining membership, was the reason for our closure." And he says, "Unless the Board of Selectment objects, we will begin the process of lease termination between the town of Wareham and the Boys and Girls Club of America," out of New Bedford.
Zero objection.
Just get it over with.
But what was that, re-termination?
The process of lease termination.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
That's fine, I mean.
Okay. So, um, we will let Mr., um, oh, Mr. Bowen and, and Mr. Sullivan will be working on that. And then, um, depending on what time you drove in here tonight, uh, there were lots of people using one of the newest additions to our facilities for recreation.
Upgrade.
Um, I'd like to take a moment, this is Mr. Sullivan, "To thank Dave Minard and the staff at Municipal Maintenance. They have been working like demons to finish the basketball courts by the multi-service center. The Wareham Junior Basketball Association has already begun using them and the kids, parents and coaches seem thrilled with the rehab courts and the bleachers. If you get a chance, please thank a staff member at the Municipal Maintenance Department. They went above and beyond in this project. They created, um, new bleachers and a handicapped entrance and they resurfaced the entire, uh, surface of the courts. Just a really nice thing to have gotten done for us." Um, liaison reports, Mr. Muniz?
Um, just, you know, interesting meeting at the planning board last night and, um, you know, a lot of people very vocal about, um, solar voltaic arrays and, um, so I have to, you know, I have to say thank you to the planning board and, uh, it's a very, it's very difficult, uh, it's, it can be a very difficult place to be in and, um, you know, my hat's off to them. It's just, you know, it's, it's not easy. People, you know, I don't know if, uh, I, I, maybe my, my, my co-liaison on that would like to opine on it, I don't know.
Do you have anything else?
No, no, I just, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. Mr. Slavin?
Uh, just to follow up with Jim last night, it was, um, a little, we'll say volatile from some people. Uh, I have to give, um, the new chair of the planning board credit for being able to, uh, not lose it and, uh, go ballistic on the person that he had him for about three minutes, tell him to stop and they didn't stop. And actually, I believe, nothing against Mr. Barrett, but this particular meeting here was the first one with Mr. Swenson really running the meeting. They assigned the clerk. Uh, I think they finished probably, I'm going to say, an hour to hour and a half earlier than normal, uh, which makes life a lot easier to deal with and, uh, I think it worked out really well. We only had one issue, but I'm not going to discuss it in public. It had to do with, uh, some comments toward one of the town employees and we can't do that. Uh, so I'm hoping that our chair will reach out to, uh, the chair of the planning board and have a discussion.
Yeah, it was, he got it, he got it at as, as it was going on, believe me.
Okay. Uh, the other piece that I have, real quick, um, the legisla- I'm on two legislative committees of Mass Municipal Association, uh, and we had a meeting this past week. The Chapter 90 funding, we've been banging away trying to get an increase of the 200 million that goes and is divided by 351 communities. It's been this way for almost 10 years, and of course, $200 million is probably worth $100 million today, and we've had no success in getting the legislature to kick up that money, simply because a lot of the municipalities are small and the amount of money they get, they have to sit and bank it for a year, two or three years before they can do anything. And the simple reason is that we all realize now that if we want to pave a mile of road these days with all the different requirements for drainage and every piece that goes with its sidewalk path, everything else, and it's almost a million dollars a mile, which makes it physically impossible. Wareham normally gets about $900,000. I'm trying to figure out still why we were cut back this year to about $800,000. All I can figure out is that there are more miles of road in the state that have been constructed, so that same $200 million gets diluted when they break it out that way. Wareham has probably 40% of the roads that are private, and therefore, I hope people realize that we get $0 for those roads out of that $800,000 that's figured out. We only get paid for roads that are public roads. So when people question why we can't do things, you know, why we do this, why we do that, we do not actually get any funding whatsoever from the state when it is a private road. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Trope, I mean, Mr. Titlebon?
Just briefly, I was invited by the planning board chairman, the redevelopment authority was last night, to go in. We sat and listened to the, what is being called loosely anyway, Phase 4 for Baypoint. This involves the Cedar property, finally, five years after, you know, we agreed to sell the property, it looks like something's actually going to happen, the redevelopment authority get the money, and we can actually start doing some things with the money. So it's good that that's finally been kicked off. Planning board had a couple of questions, nothing too crazy there. That might have been the smoothest part of the meeting, from what I understand, happened on later, so I was glad I was only there for that.
It was.
Thank you. I have nothing to report under liaison. We have some bills, payment to the law office of Richard P. Bowen, they had a motion to pay him.
Where the heck did that go?
It's, it was right there.
I know it was. I make a motion to pay Mr. Richard Bowen.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Here it is.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining, it is unanimous.
We're all done.
Yep.
That's why I had it.
Yeah, okay. And then we have some minutes to approve.
Approval of minutes, I move to approve the minutes of February 16, 2021, July 1, 2021, July 20, 2021, and July 27, 2021. You want to approve and hold? These are our regular minutes.
Those are okay. Those are approved, they're not.
They're okay to release?
They're regular minutes.
Yes, those are the regular minutes.
Those are our regular minutes.
You didn't read the executive minutes yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. It looked like the same dates.
Okay. So motion made and seconded for those? All right. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining. I will notice that those are the regular meeting minutes. Now, Mr.?
Now, the other ones.
Yeah.
I move to approve the executive session meeting minutes, July 1, to move and hold. July 1, 2021, July 20, 2021, 2021, and July 27, 2021.
And hold.
I said that. Approve and hold.
Okay, approve and hold. Motion made to approve and hold with a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.